You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the town of Swansea.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Brandon Self.
Here.
Michael York.
Yeah.
Victoria Ames.
Here.
Slickman's rep is not here. Steve Benalum is not here. Michael Skaluga not here. And Bran Vertigal not here.
You have a call?
Yes, we have a call. The agenda for this evening, we have a compliance hearing, two compliance hearings and a modification, site plan modification. Compliance hearing PB 22008. Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of John Flatley Company has submitted revisions to the conditionally approved site plan for multifamily redevelopment of, excuse me, 244 Old Homestead Highway. Revisions include location of the school bus stop, heights and types added to barriers and retaining walls, sewer manholes at each building, snow storage areas, and the subject property is shown at tax map 19 lot 98 in the industrial park district. Also PB 22021, compliance hearing, public hearing is required in both of these, I'm sorry. Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of Auburnore Development Group has submitted revisions to a conditionally approved site plan for age restricted multifamily redevelopment of 115 Old Homestead Highway. Revisions include updated drainage plan, updated utilities plan, updated landscape plan, architectural depictions reconfiguring, parking plan. Subject property is shown at tax map 37 lot 7 in the business district. Other site, other business to be followed. May I remind the public and the board on the compliance hearings, this is limited only to those items that are being considered as coming into compliance. And I'd appreciate it if we stay on point. Any deviations, I will cut you off. Okay? So with that...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Do you review the minutes?
I have not yet.
Okay.
We need to have a regional impact vote, or if there's a...
So moved. But there is none.
There is none. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The minutes from the June 22 meeting, any revisions or additions that need to be made?
Just a question for clarification. This is on the second page, the middle paragraph that begins our discussion on completeness of the application. The sentence I'm not understanding is, Jocelyn said that they are proposing a thousand gallon holding tank to capture the snow runoff? And I wonder if that was, "snow" is the right word there?
It was for snow runoff interior to the garage, because they'll be parking the vans and equipment inside the garage. So they anticipate that as the snow melts off of vehicles in the wintertime.
Thank you.
Any other comments or revisions or additions? Entertain a motion to accept them as written?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Jane Johnson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll proceed then to the first compliance hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, for the record, my name is Chad Brandon. And I'll be representing the John Flatley Company this evening with their compliance hearing for their multifamily development over tax map 19 lot 98. As the Board may recall, and Chairman Lane mentioned it, that we're really here just to review, I think, five items. And so what I've done is I've kind of color coded on plans that are before you, just those five items. We did submit with this compliance, submitted a response letter that kind of addressed how we addressed every item and where you can find them on the plan. So the first item for the compliance had to do with the location of a bus stop and depicting that on the plaque. We did locate that at the entrance, near the entrance to Sapper Drive, and we have shown that within the plan set, it's a six, six and a half foot by 10 and a half foot bus shelter. And so that location of that was depicted there after reviewing, you know, kind of layout with DOT. They would prefer that the bus stops, you know, for this facility off the highway. And so that's depicted in that location appropriately. We have also detailed the height and barriers around the pool area. The barrier around the pool area will be a four foot high black vertical aluminum fence. That style fence was a request of the Board, I believe, or at least the discussion that we had with staff early on, and so we've carried that forward. So we have shown that on the plan. We've also detailed barriers next to retaining walls, and we're proposing essentially a black vinyl chain link fence along the tops of retaining walls on the site. So you'll see the areas highlighted in green on sheets three and four depict the retaining walls for the project. We detailed the height on each one, and we've also detailed the barrier that you'll find in that location. And if you've had a chance to look at that, you can confirm that it's a four foot high black vinyl coated chain link fence that we're depicting in those areas. As you may recall, with this redesign, we were able to eliminate a number of retaining walls on the site, so there's not nearly as many as we had initially. The other modification that we needed to make is there was a request, we had notes on the plans that says, that said, you know, where this snow storage was going to be, but there was a request that we actually add labels. So the yellow highlighted areas are the labels that we've depicted on the plans, and those again can be found on sheets three and four. The only other item that we had to address was, there was a request for each service from the building to be tied into a sewer manhole rather than tying directly into a sewer main. So I'll just go through the utility plans to get to that detail. You see here, that's detailed on sheet nine and 10. Basically, all highlighted on here is the sewer service and how it ties directly into the wall. We do have the state sewer discharge permit for this project. We've also secured the alteration of terrain permit, and I do believe we just secured the weather permit this week. So the only permit that's remaining for this project is the DOT permit. DOT actually just came back to us and said they're going to issue the permit. What they asked us to do is to put, and it may sound crazy, but they want us to put a little speed table in this location right here. And in that location, it will not require any additional drainage or anything like that, but what they want is for people to just kind of go slowly as they approach the highway. And, you know, we thought that was a reasonable request. That just came about earlier this week, but I wanted to share it with you this evening. So that's just a minor modification that'll be had as a condition of that DOT permit. On sheet 10, you'll see that these three buildings tie into this manhole, and that's exactly what the sewer committee was looking for, is to make sure we're tying into a manhole so that they can essentially clean out those service lines from the building. So those are the only items that were on the compliance and kind of shared a little update on the state permits. I know the client has sent this project out to bid. They are looking forward to starting this summer, and so we're hopeful that the Board will sign off on the compliance hearing this evening.
Excuse me, I neglected to open the public hearing on this as you started this. I'm sorry. But are there any comments from the public on this? Any questions from the Board?
Pretty straightforward what they asked.
The only thing I would ask is, is it possible on that pool to be after the six foot high, where it is close to the highway? But just four feet, this does not seem, I know it's regulation for state, but I would be more comfortable if we had a six foot fence out there to keep other, you know, keep people out of it. I know it's going to be gated, but still, two feet is a big deal.
I mean, I would be happy to review that with the client. I mean, the vinyl, the aluminum vertical fencing is very expensive, so I don't know what the price difference is between four and six feet. I know four feet meets all code requirements, but I would be happy to ask them, and, you know, hopefully we can incorporate that. I'd prefer not to commit, I'm hoping that, you know, I will try to secure that, but I understand your statement, there will be landscaping around, you know, the perimeter of that fencing as well, which will act as a deterrent too. And this facility will be manned at the clubhouse, that's where they typically have the maintenance and leasing. But certainly after hours, I understand what you're saying.
Would they have any kind of security monitoring set up, do you think?
They normally have video security onsite. You know, that's not something that I've talked about with them on this property, but it would not surprise me if they, you know, carried that through.
I wondered if having a sign, you know, that indicates that there is a security camera recording people who are hopping fence, that would be...
I mean, certainly it's...
...discouraging, I don't know.
There's a liability that the owner incurs otherwise, so...
No, I'm thinking about keeping the fence hoppers safe, I guess.
Well, yeah, but that's a liability that the owner of the property takes, just like you do if you have run right yards.
Right, if there was an issue, they most certainly would address it in some fashion, whether it's signage or, you know, if they don't already have that. I'm trying to think of, I mean, we've done seven or eight of these facilities with them, and there's generally a lot of, you know, security and landscaping and, you know, I would say interest in preventing stuff like that, but I just don't want to, I mean, if I absolutely had to agree to six feet, I'm sure I could, but I would prefer if the Board just acknowledged and accepted, that I'll bring that request to the owner and that the plan as we are presenting it technically meets all the requirements.
Agreed. Is that something we could put into ministry and not hang up?
Would we be able to do that? Because technically meets the requirements as it is now.
Right.
So you can't make him put up a six foot fence because you think that he should, even because he meets the requirements now.
No, I understand, it's not the state requirement, but whether or not we can...
I think all we can do is ask for it, if you'll do it. But still, we have to, in my mind, we have to prove the changes because he thinks exactly what we said.
And if it is agreeable with the builder, that it would just be notify the planning Board's office or the...
We would include it on the final plans.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion that it's met the compliance. We approve.
We have big questions from the people out there.
I've asked already.
Did you, ma'am, you have one?
I'm sorry.
I'm pretty much out of the pain, but, you know, we had...
Excuse me, would you identify some?
Sharon DeRitter, Wilson Pond.
Sharon, I'm sorry, the last name?
D-Ritter.
Okay, thank you.
It might be like you say, out of the Bay League of this one, but we had the hundred, the thousand year flood, and, you know, and most of the time you go by a hundred year flood, but I don't know if that pond, if you stop me, then I'm okay, but I don't know if that pond is going to take it and then it's going to come into Wilson Pond, so I don't know, or through the airport, I don't know.
We can't open that up.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So again, I'll entertain a motion for...
I'll move that it's met the compliance, we've asked for.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to PB 22021, compliance hearing from Fieldstone Land Consultants on behalf of Auburnore Development Corp. Submitted revisions conditionally approved site plan, aid restricted multifamily redevelopment of 115 Old Homestead Highway. Revisions include updated drainage, drainage plan, updated utilities plan, updated landscaping plan, architectural depictions, reconfigured parking plan. The subject property is shown at tax map 37 lot 7 in the business district. With that, I'll open the public hearing for that. Come here to speak to you? Oh, chat's chat.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, again, for the record, my name's Chad Brandon, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. We're representing Auburnore Development for their compliance hearing this evening for the plane view elderly housing or senior housing development at tax map parcel 37 lot 7 at 115 Old Homestead Highway. With this submission, we, and I'll just turn, get to kind of what we had submitted before. I know that there was a request for me to bring the old plans and the new plans so that we could try to go back and forth. With this project, we had modified the parking layout, or we had talked about that as a condition of approval. We had to modify the parking layout in the back to accommodate no waiver in the parking lot reduction. So this was the plan that we had presented and was ultimately conditionally approved. This plan, if you recall, showed kind of a future parking area back here, but we didn't really finalize or formalize that because the Board unfortunately, at the time, denied our waiver 20% reduction request. So with this layout, we, you know, needed 118 parking spaces. The current layout that we have before you depicts the 118 spaces, and it shows an improvement to the landscaping. We also addressed the drainage and utilities for the project. And then in just looking at, I can go into as much detail as the Board would like on that, but in looking at the staff memo, what I want to focus on is there were some questions relative to the drainage plan, utilities plan, landscaping plan. So we took the opportunity this week to make those adjustments, and I brought 11 by 17s with, plans, color plans with me. I just want to go over the very minor modifications, and I think it'll show that we have sufficiently addressed all the requirements. And so if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I can hand these out to the Board, and then I can just walk through the changes.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
set that was submitted that we had at the end for a couple of weeks?
Sure. Yeah, there's very, very few revisions to the plans that are before you and ones that I have before you. So I'm happy to cover those. I couldn't, the first place to start, well, I guess just taking a look at the staff, I mean, we'll just walk down three of those. The drainage plan, there was a comment that the drainage plan is incomplete, we didn't show the drip edge around the building and the connection to the drainage system. So basically, all that is, is around the building, the entire building, we have a stone drip edge, and that has a six inch perforated pipe, and that perforated pipe does tie into the drainage system. So we have shown that stone drip edge on this revised plan that we have in front of you, and then we've shown three connections to the drainage trunk line that was part of the plans that we submitted. So there'll be a connection out in the front corner of the building where it'll tie into the catch base in there. There'll be a connection in the middle, will tie into catch base two, and then there'll be another connection down here. We typically don't show perimeter drains and connections until we get into a construction plan set, but it was a valid question, a good question brought up during the plan review, so we wanted to, you know, detail that on these plan sets. We normally don't show that because foundation design change, you know, a little bit when they go to a structural engineer, and so they might recommend, you know, instead of a six inch, we want to do an eight inch here or whatever. I mean, we have run calculations, a six inch would work, that six inch pipe goes around the entire perimeter of the building and again will tie in to three locations. So that really addresses the drainage question on this one.
Is that the one you submit to the state? Is that going to show exactly what you have up there now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And the state ultimately approves, so the treatment components on this project are the chamber system in the back. So we're not accounting for this perimeter drain for treatment. That perimeter drain ties into the closed drainage system and ultimately goes to this back chamber system. So this is really what the state will focus on, but that perimeter drain is part of their review.
Thank you.
So that's the one change for drainage. As far as the utilities plan, utilities plan, there's a note in the staff memo that says the updated utility plan shall include a manhole as requested at this street intersection. That's this connection right here, that manhole actually is already in. When we secured approvals for the landowner, Mr. Thomas, he actually put that manhole in and the stub onto the site because DOT was coming through and paving the highway, and there's a five year moratorium when the state does that. So he did that to make sure that, you know, he could have that utility connection wasn't going to be held up by that moratorium. So that manhole is there, that's why we were not showing a proposed manhole, but for whatever reason, the symbol for the existing manhole was not depicted, and so we have added that to the plans that we have before. So very minor change on that one. I will say too, just so that everybody knows, in the addition of the perimeter drain, we also did add a detail to the detail sheet, the stone drip edge perimeter drain that shows the, you know, the stone material, the, you know, the equitable dimensions, the six inch pipe, so it's part of the construction set, it's not just, you know, detailed on a plan view. Sorry, I'd be hopping all over, I need to bring that up. That's why there's four, normally the detail sheet for the last one. And then the last item consists of the landscaping plan. I personally did the calculations for the landscaping this week because this calculation, for some reason, can get very complicated, and I tried to really detail and simplify this because I think what happens is, you know, we're running a lot of calculations and sometimes we group them, and it's hard to check the numbers. And so what I did is, and you'll see on the landscaping sheet that's in front of you, sheet six, I hatched areas that I'm counting in the back of the parking area for landscaping. So, and when I ran the numbers, I was short by about 50 square feet, and so we removed one parking space, which is 162 square feet, just so you know. And we've updated the site plan that is in front of you, shows an updated parking calculation where it's 117 spaces are required, and now we have 117 instead of 118. Taking a look at this plan, what I've done is if you, this kind of heavy gray line shows the outline of the parking area. This is the area that people occupy with a car or pull into a parking space, and it's the area where you would typically square off a parking lot. So when you have these internals, these four internal spaces, which are clearly internal, come out to about 2,500 square feet. And then we have these corner areas, which are also internal. We've always been able to count those as internal because if you square off the parking lot, it's internal, it's not counted for a buffer, it's not counted for anything else. It's part of the parking area. This total area, this big area here is, and it's not on the sheet, but I wanted to just explain to everybody how I calculated this so that we can hopefully come to some understanding. This heavy gray line has an area of 37,527 square feet, okay? You have to take out the landscaping areas because you can't count the landscaping areas towards a parking landscaping calculation. So that 37,527 square feet, take out the landscaping areas, which is all of these green hatched areas total 3,433 square feet. That gives you a total impervious parking area of 34,094 square feet, and you'll notice I updated that on the landscaping requirements note as well. 10% of that is 3,409 square feet, and we have 3,433 square feet. So we meet that landscaping parking requirement. This parking lot in the back has 100 spaces in it. 100 spaces. Your new site plan regulations have a requirement of 10 square feet per space in a parking lot. Your new site plan requirements would require 1,000 square feet. We have 3,409 square feet. We're not, didn't make any changes. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, there was a number thrown out that we, and I think it's mentioned in the staff memo, that we have to be at, there was actually a vote on this number, 3,360 square feet, so we exceed that number as well. We have never gone to this extent.
Just for the record, so how many square feet is landscaping there for?
We have 3,409 square feet, which is required, that's required. We have, we are providing 3,433 square feet. And so we believe we've addressed this landscaping topic. I think there was a lot of confusion in how we were doing the math. I'm trying, this exhibit is intended to show exactly what we're doing. And, you know, interestingly enough, your new regulations essentially are exactly how we calculated in the first place, which is you take the parking area and you take 10% of that. Parking lot or a parking space is 162 square feet. 10% of that is 16 square feet. Your regulations are 10. So, I mean, we're kicking around a lot of numbers, but I think we clearly meet what we talked about, and, you know, it appears as though we meet what the intent is because, you know, of what the current regulations are. But I'm not looking to confuse anything, I just want to be very open and very upfront on how we've made this calculation. This topic seems to have been talked about a lot, and I think we've addressed it. I will say professionally that I am still baffled as to why we can't have a parking reduction here, I just feel like I have to share that, because I know an elderly housing project is not going to require this many spaces. And I think it's unfortunate when people are talking about rainfall events and runoff and the amount of flooding that we should be, I feel like ethically as a professional engineer, we, I should at least talk about, you know, how we have an opportunity to reduce impervious cover and runoff, and, you know, I think that we've, if there is, I will share, I'm going to make a recommendation to the client that we, you know, revisit this at some point, but, you know, as it stands right now, the Board has taken a vote on it, I just am saying that personally for the record. I wish the Board would reconsider that. I wish the board would reconsider that. So, that, with that, Mr. Chairman, you know, we have addressed all of the compliance items. This chamber system in the back has been redesigned to address all the impervious area. We meet all the parking standards, which I think is covered in the memo. The water and sewer connections haven't changed from when we presented the plan, you know, many months ago. It's really, it's really been a parking lot landscaping and drainage exercise. We have made a submission to the Alteration of Terrain Bureau for this project. We have requested a waiver for our timeframe. And I will share that when we've done that in the past on similar type housing projects where it's, you know, elderly or workforce housing, we do get permit in a very reasonable amount of time. And so, we anticipate the same on this one. My client looks forward to moving this project forward.
That's an administrative thing.
So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
First of all, thank you for the clarity in how you proposed calculations because that is not clear. It was confusing for me. And I'm wondering if we believe that it's within our purview to discuss the actual planting materials, I believe, because you've had a request for a conservation commission to reconsider the pears?
Yes, and we are not opposed to revisiting the vegetation. And I did see that, and I'm sorry I didn't address it. We were proposing 12 pear trees. I mean, a pear tree is a nice flowering tree, so it is very aesthetically pleasing. But we certainly would be happy to look at it. I mean, crabapple is kind of the same. And Mr. Franks, I don't know if you have a preference on, you know, pear, crabapple. The crabapples are nice, but the conservation commission has asked for us to consider substituting the pear trees for crabapples and service berries. And I didn't see an issue with that.
I can speak to that a little bit if I may, just to continue my question. So, the issue with the pear trees is that we are, most entities are discouraging planning boards from recommending those because they're weird and great. They're pretty until they're not, right? But they're about 40 feet tall in maturity. And so, my thought in that most of what's shown in that parking area to break up the asphalt and to, you know, give shade and seasonal color. It would be my preference that we replace those with trees that are similar height. Yes, there are, admit, there's like a thousand species of crabapples and many of them are prone to virus, but they tend to be about 20 feet tall. And so, the other option that the conservation commission recommended is service berry, which goes to be about 30 feet tall. Those are really nice, but I wondered if you would consider yet another option, which is unlike the crabapple, native species, and that's the cornus, I'm sorry, circus, which is red bud, okay?
Which is what?
Red bud, Eastern red bud. And the reason I recommend that is that it's really pretty in all seasons and it does really well in Swansea, okay? A beautiful specimen in the mountains. It's beautiful in the spring. The shape of the tree is nice. It's taller, it's more of a sort of a lollipop shape than a vase shape. So, you can get the volume a bit up high. And the leaves are really pretty in the fall. It's just year-round, really, really pretty. So, that's a specific recommendation. And furthermore...
Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Franks?
No, but I like, I don't know what the cost is. So, you know, it's a public-private partnership or tax credits for senior housing that has limited funding available. So, at the outset, it's a great possibility to absorb it. Certainly would do that. But, I mean, we have limitations to what we're allowed to do. So, I wouldn't want to promise it, but if it's comparable in price, of course.
So, just to, this is an expert on trees for municipal settings. And he writes that every city, town, municipality and garden should enthusiastically embrace red buds. They add seasonal and ornamental attributes to landscapes, rewarding with expressive and much anticipated spring flowers, elegant and artistic grandstream structure, clean dark summer foliage and respectable yellow fall color. So, highly recommended from the guy who knows.
Is it red maple? Red bud? R-E-D-B-U-D. Oh, red bud, not red maple.
No, no, there's plenty of red maple shown here.
They have red maple in here too.
So, it'd be wonderful if that's, you've considered that to replace these calorie pears, which will be short-lived and not very attractive in the long run. And then, the other question on actual trees is, as you have explained how you made your calculations for the rear parking lot, how did you count the eight frontage trees? Could you just number those for me? Because most of what's along that frontage is very small. I would think that the more screening you could get along that frontage, along, we are two.
All right, so we have, I mean, we have a pear tree here, one here, one here. So, that's three, right?
So, you're counting those as shade trees, the pear trees as shade trees?
Well, they're, as you stated, they grow to 40 feet in height. So, they would qualify as a shade tree, certainly. And then, we have the blue spruce out front. And we have one, two, I think there's even one or that, but three, four of those. And so, that's lost track.
So, the way you got there is by counting pear trees?
Absolutely. I mean, I think technically as a tree, it does address that regulation.
Okay, and then just a final thought, which is that, you know, all of these, we have discretion and all these considerations are minimal, right? Even the sizable parking spaces, which are under regulations. Just saying.
Yes, sir.
Chair Ward, City Home Point. I'm glad you went through the parking calculations. Let me just ask the board, if I have 10 digits on my two hands, is, are my thumbs 20% of my digits? Or are they 25% of my digits? Two divided by what? The regulation says 10% of the interior of the parking lot. So, if that implies that just as I might say 20% of my digits are thumbs, that the 10% of landscaping that's interior to the parking lot is part of the interior of the parking lot, just as my thumbs are part of the digits on my hands. So, that means that it's a minor point, but it's one of the reasons that there's been some confusion about all of this is the assumption is that 10% of implies that it's 10% of the whole with the 10%, with 10% deducted from. 10% of 90% of words, or 9%. So, it's a difference of 1%. Big deal. But I just want to point that out and let the planning board sort that through in your heads because this regulation applies to other developments as well down the future and so on. And if you say 10% of, then that's 10% of the whole and that 10% is part of the whole. And that's my argument about the mathematics of it. And that would, it's 1% which is, well, it could be 375 feet, it could be 300 whatever feet of, square feet of the parking area that isn't landscaped. And it's one of the reasons when I look at something like this plan, I don't see visually that it looks like 10%. I can understand, and it's really helpful the way you outlined it, Chad, you color-coded it, and I can see on there what you're counting. And I don't really have any wiggles with what you're counting. It's just the way the calculation goes doesn't sit well with me, but that's for the planning board to decide, not me. So, that's up to you folks, how you want to read that. The other thing I'll say is that I was told that one of the other knocks on the cowl repair is that it smells.
This man.
Hi, can I come up? I don't know if that was part...
Would you identify yourself?
Rachel Elkins, three picture point. On this south side here, I think we spoke about landscaping. And of course, this is the side that is going to be highly visible. This side's not going to be, just the Jehovah Witnesses right there and it's... But I resolutely understand that the landscaping would be all the way across here. I don't see anything here, nothing there. I was just questioning.
We added the links, if you may recall, we added landscaping down along this section that helped shield the parking. But we could...
Yeah, that's not going to be visible from the road, but all of this will be. And, you know, I thought we'd have something along here.
We meet all the landscaping requirements through that section. I mean, be happy to shift, you know, some of the trees around if the board would like, but there's no... We can get into that detail and talk about it. We'd be happy to shift the tree or two around, you know, take one of these and put it here on the gable. We already, we actually have a fair number of planned things through this side here. We have some arborvitae and we have the blue spruce. I mean, so I think we're only really talking about maybe this stretch right here.
I don't remember what date it was for meeting, but I remember looking at this when we were upstairs at one meeting and asking why there was no landscaping in that third section on the south side. It just sticks out when you, and when you look at a picture like this, that, you know, of a drawing of what it would finally look like, there was nothing in front of that part of the building from the south side. I remember speaking to that, so it must be somewhere in the many minutes.
Can you reference what was the original that they submitted?
There's none on it, on any of them.
This was, this was the exhibit plan that we presented that showed the layout at the meeting. And you can see we didn't have any landscaping along, you know, this section here. But we clearly have changed that. You can see the vast amount of landscaping that we've added. You know, I mean, it just, we were, again, we're happy to shift and place a couple, you know, or a tree or something there. But I think the, you know, what we need to understand is people are going to be traveling on the road, you know, through here. You're going to be looking, you know, into the site really through where we try to concentrate a, you know, a great deal of that landscaping. And we do meet the regulations. We actually exceed it because we've added, as you suggested, we have added some landscaping.
Well, that's very true. It will be visible to people at the business next to Aviation Way too. They're not here to say anything, but I would say if I were visiting there, where they have an outdoor area and everything, you would certainly notice that if there's nothing there, so would one more tree really break the cameras back?
And, you know, arborvitae, you've got, if you were to have a plant of this, set of arborvitae that would be similar to what is on the front portion in that location on the rear, you know, put forward by arborvitae, those are very inexpensive trees that we're not really... We're sensitive to the cost of these, but we're also highly cognizant of the impact that this very large structure is going to have in the densely populated area that it's proposed to occupy. So, I think we, you know, it's not unreasonable for us to make sure that we can screen it and soften the impact of the massive scale as much as possible. I think that's completely reasonable for us to represent some interest in that.
Right, but we're, and then, that may be fine, but we're talking about a compliance, do we meet the compliance here and is our generally, do you meet the regulations or not? It's not, we're not here looking for the approval where we'd be negotiating, you know, the landscaping. I think we're at a different stage. With that said, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to make sure we stay within the boundaries of something here. You know, we, you know, we could add one more tree right here, which I think would balance the distance, right? So, but we have to agree on like this and, you know, so if we add a tree here, right, or somewhere in this location, right there, that balances kind of the distance between the trees along that section. Would that address the concern?
Absolutely. I think like, you know, and we're not, I suppose are not supposed to think of this, but if I were living in that building, it would mean a lot to me to have a tree outside. That section has nothing outside of it. It's just that last section.
So, we would ask that that be allowed to be an administrative thing so that we can hopefully make it through the compliance here.
Right, and I understand it is better than it was. And you did put some in there, but I don't know why you didn't put one in there anyway. But I think it would soften the impact of the whole building too if we had...
So, let's say that's an administrative thing that they show the planning board, the planning that we, that they've added that on the plans. So, they don't have to come in for another compliance.
Go ahead.
Rachel Elkins, can I just say this, that I would just ask that the board consider what he said of moving something like right here. You know, way back here is going to be backed by the airport. Nobody's going to see that. But up here, everybody's going to see this. So, you know, if there is any way to move that, I would like...
Don't you have some plan to check what she's talking about?
Yeah, we have, I mean, we have the blue spruce up in here. We have, you know, really kind of a hedge of arborvitae along this section. Then we have, we have trees through...
Like a couple of trees right here, you know, in addition to this one would make a big difference.
Any other comments or questions from the public? Thinking about what you were asking about the parking and what it might do with the landscaping, I'm inclined to ask that we continue the public hearing until the, was it the 20th? 27th? And have you come in with what you're suggesting, what you feel as a professional we should be looking at and showing the landscaping changes that it would incur with that? I think that we still have, you know, a lot to digest on this. That's my, you know, have a consensus of the board.
So, you're saying that you would, you personally feel that we, as a board, perhaps we should reconsider the reduction that was proposed in the parking spaces?
It would, it would still fall within the, I believe, within the compliance part of this. But we would just continue the public hearing and look at what the, what he's suggesting and what landscaping changes could be there. So, we'd have, you know, that way we'd have a final thing. I think that is basically the only hangup that we have.
Well, can we, can we talk about it, Mr. Chairman? Because, I mean, we're out of compliance hearing. Feel like this is a really simple discussion. And I think I'd at least like to have it and have me, because to just go blindly into another hearing and coming back with a plan that we maybe, I mean, and I'm not suggesting I don't think you're, where you're going is a good idea, but I would like to talk about some details, you know, of that. And for example, you know, what we're talking about is basically a 24, 23 or 24 space reduction. I think it's 23. So, you have 14 spaces on this back side, right? So, we would look at getting rid of, our proposal would be, you know, to move the parking, you know, this way from, you know, from the back and keep the drainage... and keep the drainage, you know, out there. So you'd have, you know, more green space in the back, you know, of the site. You would have, we would get rid of, you know, 14 here. And then if you took, take a look at the center, basically for every, you know, row of spaces is four. So we'd be taking, you know, two rows of spaces there, which would be eight. You know, so now you're at, you know, you're right around the number that we would be in. So we're essentially, you take the landscape islands and you take these 14 spaces and you shift that way. And maybe we leave these 14 off the end and we just keep shifting in, keeping the landscaping. And so at that point, if you think about it, you have four, you would lose four spaces linearly, linearly in the center. And so if it's, you know, 24, let's just say for round numbers, if we're talking about 24 spaces, we would lose six of these. So one, two, three, four, five, six. Probably would actually be five because we're losing a couple of parallel spots here as well. And then this whole back would just come in. We keep the 14 off the end because the more I'm thinking about it out loud, if we have the access aisle, it's efficient to have the parking off the back when you have the aisle already. But it would allow us to remove, so if we removed five of these parking bays, if you will, that would be 20 spaces. And then, you know, maybe three parking, three parallel spaces here would be 23.
It's good, you'd keep the same square footage of landscaping. You wouldn't reduce the landscaping.
We wouldn't reduce the internal landscaping.
So your percentages actually would go up.
Correct.
Are you saying that it would be...
We'll go beyond that, sorry.
What are you... No, no, what I'm saying is if you can envision, like envision these landscape blocks, they would go this, every, would go this way, five spaces.
Five times four is 23, plus the extra...
It's still...
Of three here.
And landscaping.
No, we, we, landscaping isn't the same as the parking.
The configured parking plan was part of the compliance hearing.
Yes.
So I think...
But the board, I mean, my point is, is here we are in a, here we are in a compliance hearing. The board would need to approve that waiver for us to move in that direction. So if you want to, I'll formally request the waiver tonight. If you approve it, we're happy to go forward and make the plan changes.
What's the feeling on the board?
If we granted them that parking reduction, that would take care of any landscaping issues, you know, because then the percentage would automatically go up.
I've been reading about parking. I don't know if you've read this book, okay? But you, when you originally came in, you had numbers from other similar projects that indicated that you have firsthand experience with how many parking spaces these facilities generally require. And it was only over 20% less than what's proposed here, right?
It was more than 20. We came in with, I think it was, we presented and it's been a while, but I believe it was, was it 72 or 75 spaces? Jack, it was one point.
It's, Chad Franks, this is data from the State Housing Finance Department, state agency, over 40 years of data that they have for hundreds of developments like this in rural and metropolitan areas or larger areas around the state. And that's 0.9 spaces per unit. So in a case with 74 units, looking at 64, 65, but a few for staff. So that's, that's, that's the standard.
But we have no, no public transportation. So does it account for rural areas?
Yes, it does, yeah.
But the reality is, is your regulations only allow a 20% reduction. So the requirement is 117. You know, 80% of that would be, 117 would be 94. So we'd be at 94 spaces in total.
And we have that, the space in the rear you've shown us with your drainage system that you can accommodate if there becomes a need to have that additional parking, you know, at the rear, you can install it as you have proposed here, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, the site's designed for 117, but it's just unfortunate to build it just to build it.
Yeah, so I, I'm in favor, considering the 20% reduction.
22 fewer parking spaces?
You still have, what's the to, what would be the total, I'm sorry?
94.
94 would be left for 72 units. Do you want to continue it?
I, I, I don't know. I can't decide. I really... 94 parking spaces as opposed to 117.
Absolutely, yeah. That's the 20% reduction.
Yeah.
But we still have, we still have the facility.
If there was an issue on site, the site's been, I mean, we're not going to change the drainage design. The site's going to be designed to accommodate 117 spaces, but we're not going to build the park, the rear parking area.
They'd have the ability to add in more.
I was going to say, but if you find, if people are complaining they have no place to park, would you?
I mean, the room is there, and I think, I just want to be clear on one thing. We are, it's either a yes or no on the parking waiver. I mean, we can't just continue it with being in no man's land. And so there has to be a comfort bubble with what we're talking about. Where's, we provided math when we presented this project that 0.9 is the requirement. Mr. Franks has a number of, you know, other sites that he owns or in, in, in West Swansea, I believe, the parking waiver was granted there. You know, from the same, in the same community, same situation, same, it's almost same exact situation where it was designed where it would accommodate it if it was needed, but just not required and instructed.
If I were assured that, that it would be green, green space instead of the parking spaces, I would favor it.
Yeah, that's, that's the presumption, that it would be undeveloped, it would be landscaping in one form or another, that it would be...
I would trade, I would make a trade for that, right?
Mike, do you have anything to put on this?
I mean, yeah, I guess, I guess, I guess just for me, it's, it's, it's a business. It's made to make money. You're not going to put in parking spaces, so few parking spaces, so they'd be unable to rent a place. I mean, it just, it just doesn't make any sense. It's antithetical to what they're, what they're trying to do. They're trying to fill every unit. And in order to do that, they have to accommodate each individual tenant. And if that requires more parking, they're going to put in, you can start with 12 spaces. And as they got units, they would just keep adding, to bring it to ludicrous place. But they've got the room to take as many parking spaces as they could ever possibly reasonably need. And, and I, this community is, values its green spaces. It values its natural surroundings. I know to many people this itself is antithetical. But to make it more antithetical, it just doesn't make any sense to me. If you have an opportunity to plant another piece of grass, another flower, another tree, I would do that in my own life.
Are you going to...
I'm sorry, excuse me. Go ahead.
I think it's hilarious. I'm very excited. Not necessarily opposed to making the parking area smaller. I like green space, but I've heard several times, like you say, we are in compliance. So if we are going to make that parking area place smaller, I would like to hear us say, we would like this many trees or we would like this. Because I was here when Jane said, you know, we had this, yes, we'll do that. And it wasn't about compliance. So, and I'm not saying you're intentionally doing anything. I'm just saying if we're going to say we're in compliance, then if we're going to agree to do something and there's a compromise, then we should put that compromise in writing or go back and listen to the minutes. And I don't, I'm really not trying to sound hating type, you know, I get that this is going to happen. Just feeling it would be nicer if there was more green space. And I feel like we have both compromised both things. I remember we asked, let's make the roof lower. You came back with half of the roof lower. So I feel like we are all compromised. So let's not just say we're in compliance. Let's decide what we want to do and what works for it. At the right cost, I get there's a cost.
Richard, do you need to close the public hearing? I have more to add.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think we're not taking into the case here the human element. We'd be seniors in here. I think they'd like to look out their window once in a while, maybe see the airport or see the street or, I mean, throwing up barriers all the way around the building is counterproductive to a healthy living environment. I mean, more grass is good, but to throw up more trees and just block views is me, to me, counterproductive to a healthy living environment for seniors that are going to be living there that are going to want to be able to look around a little bit rather than being boxed in. So I, you know, take that into consideration there. You know, would you like to live in a building where there's trees all the way around, fences all the way around, you can't see out? Think about it for a minute. People want to be able to have views, to be able to see the airport, traffic, reading a book, watching planes come in, come out. It's all positive stuff, but if there's trees in the way, you know, you're not going to be able to enjoy some of those surroundings. So, you know, I think that is something that needs to be taken into consideration when adding more trees, I guess, to the area. That's just my humble opinion, but...
My only comment is that the only ones that'll be able to see the airport are the ones at the part of this back building facing the airport because everything else is perpendicular. But anyways, that's just, okay?
Can we repress birdhouses in those trees?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just being smart. Can we repress birdhouses in those trees?
Okay, I'm going to close, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I've got my hand up for a long time.
Well, I'm sorry, you blend in with the Drake.
I'm sorry. I change words, yeah. I, I understand that this is a, it's an interesting compromise, moving the, moving the back forward and gaining some, some space there. The percentage of landscaping goes up. I would imagine a couple of points there. One of them is if you do that, you're making less parking lot. You're saving a little money. It would seem to me that that might allow you to put some more trees along the south edge. That's a possible plus for that. And that would satisfy those of us who'd like to see more green space and less asphalt. I, I can see if we do that, however, and we had to add more parking, it might be more difficult to add the parking simply because how do you get to those parking spaces in that area that you freed up? But, but that was an engineered problem for the future, not for right now. So I can understand that as well. And I would just, in a slightly different tone, I'd just like to say that I agree that it's nice to look out your window and see something, but at least at my house, we like to look out the window and see the birds and the trees. So it's a, it's a, there are positives either way. We put landscaping there, we put, we leave it all there. And in terms of the town, the neighborhood, having the screening around the buildings makes them look more a part of the neighborhood than something that's just sort of blocked in there as a, as a monolith. Okay? So, I mean, I think you, the board seems to be working toward a nice compromise. Maybe going back and doing the, the reduction of parking if we can gain landscaping in the same way. They certainly gained more percentage, but can we also gain a few trees? That's my question. And the other thing is that one of the reasons that I didn't like this project from the very beginning was I didn't see how you could put the required amount of parking and the required amount of landscaping on the lot. So something has to give. And if something had to give, it should be the parking and not the landscaping.
Can I just address that, Mr. Chairman, just very clear? We've proven with the plans that we have before you, with all the regulations in our plan, we have all the parking. So there is nothing that has to give. Now that we've proven that, is I think of just, again, this is my personal view. I mean, if the board votes tonight that this is the plan to build, we're here for a compliance, and I keep saying compliance hearing because it's been a very long process, right? And we, we want it to come to a conclusion. And so, but I think we're having very good discussion about very small improvements to the landscaping, which I think are, are reasonable. I mean, we've added one tree so far. And, you know, if we, and maybe we've, you know, agreed to change this species that we talked about earlier. But if we move this parking area to the back, if we don't take the landscaping away, then it does bring some of that vegetation, you know, a little bit closer and provides a little bit more of a buffer that, you know, is being talked about. Now, the, I think it's important and I think it's reasonable based on, you know, what we're talking about. We're, we don't have to regrade the site. We don't have to, you know, redo, you know, much work. All we really have to do is move the landscape islands five spaces forward, pull this pavement in, and now that becomes a grass area out in the back, which could be an area where residents come and, you know, sit down and watch the planes if they, you know, if they so choose, which would be, you know, a green area. But what I'm suggesting, and I think some people may be taking it out of context, is we're not here tonight to talk about a waiver. We appreciate the discussion. I think it's a good discussion, especially on the heels of, you know, a horrific storm that we've, you know, dealt with in this region. And so I'm just asking, and I, and I really would hope that we can come to terms with, you know, this adjustment, the landscaping, the percentages will increase, the, you know, the separation will get better. We would agree to this one, you know, addition, adding a tree in that location. And, you know, maybe we agree to the, the species change. If we can come to a conclusion tonight on a waiver and handle it with staff. I mean, the staff is definitely qualified enough to see these revisions through. And we're really talking about some minor changes to the back of the site at this point.
Now I'm going to close the public hearing.
Let's have a discussion.
Pardon?
Let's have a discussion.
Yes.
Do away with that last one because we get interrupted. I do like the idea of rethinking it a little bit. I agree that they could probably add the parking as they needed to if we can gain some green space to it. And I think it could be handled administratively. I don't think we need to have them come back in. All they got to do is bring in the Sarah and let them look at it and say, okay, it looks good to us. That's my personal feeling.
I agree myself.
Victoria?
I'm, I'm in favor of the parking reduction as long as no landscaping is lost and in fact more landscaping is gained. You know, an alternative solution, I don't know if this could possibly work, but it pushed came to shove potentially the, the property owner could consult with the people who have the diner, the restaurant next door, you know, for, to lease some spaces during the off hours when the restaurant isn't being used. You know, we could be...
For parking, you mean, for visitors?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we could actually, there are more creative solutions than building, you know, there can be like time share use of parking spaces.
In actuality, there are parking spaces down along the fence line of the airport by the old hangar that could be utilized, you know, if something like that.
But I do think, I would, I like the idea of less pavement and more green. And I certainly like the idea of more trees. And I like the idea of taking what will be significant financial savings and using that money to enhance the landscaping. So to use higher quality... plantings like, for example, red buds instead of the pears or, or crab apples.
Jane, everyone.
I definitely think it would be an improvement for the people who are gonna be living there to have more growing vegetation. Yes. We're back to the same problem. The whole thing is really too big for the space it's in in the first place, but I, we can't do anything about that. But we can add, if we can add some more grass and trees, it might be more comfortable.
We cannot add, well...
Well, grass.
Yeah.
Helps you...
Excuse me. The, the drainage areas, holding area at the end of the parking lot now, that cannot be, you can put a hot top over that, right? Hard, hard pavement, but you cannot put any trees or anything like that in because of the root problems, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so...
Really, all we're asking, what we would ask is, we think this is a, a step in the right direction. We would be willing to add, you know, the tree and to upgrade the plants to the, you know, the red bud, but we wouldn't want to vegetate this area back here with trees or shrubs. I think it would be best served as an open lawn area, because if there ever, ever was a need for parking, you'd hate to take a tree down to park there.
You do sort of tree down, though, at the end.
Just, yeah, but this is awfully, you know, so...
Oh, that's not on your site?
No, this is on the site. It's outside of the current parking area. So, that would, you know, the...
That'd still be there.
Yeah, that would still be there. So, so what we're talking about, we're happy to increase with the plant species and the one tree, and then we're moving everything in. And, you know, that's where, that's where we, that's where we stand right now. And we would hope the board would, would entertain that. If we're talking about, we, we have to define exactly what the change is, 'cause I don't wanna come back to the board. No offense, I'll be in front of you again, but hopefully not with this project.
That's pitiful. Sarah, does, does the applicant need to ask for a waiver in the winter? Does that, or, or do we, can we voluntarily?
Well, the applicant did formally request the waiver in the wintertime, and you guys denied it, but I believe you could reconsider that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to take a vote on that first.
Yeah, you would need to have a motion to reconsider it and then address the waiver itself.
To reconsider, we have to reopen the public hearing.
Oh, God, I don't know.
I'm sorry about asking that.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Can we not...
You could reopen the public hearing tonight. Everybody's still here.
Just to be safe. It wouldn't hurt, can't hurt.
What's the feeling?
What's that?
What is the consensus?
I don't know what to tell you. Sarah doesn't know.
Reopening, reopening, making...
While we're here now, we might as well get it over with.
Yeah, that's what we're just doing.
Yeah, in my opinion.
And you can open it, see...
Open it just real quick. Give everybody a chance to weigh in.
Did you, Richard, did you weigh in? Do you, do you feel comfortable with it, making a decision at this point? I don't remember if you weighed in, as you went around the group, but did you...
No, my, my feeling is, um, that if we shortened up the parking area and maintained the same square footage of landscaping and actually maintaining that whatever...
The backside is grass.
You know, the backside of that, how many square feet or how the depth of it or whatever, as a lawn, that people could come out in chairs if they wish or something like that. Just, you know, who knows? They may have an airshow sometime again. But it would, to me, that would be something that would be more encompassing or more...
More pleasant, be better than blacktop.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would say...
Richard, go ahead.
Just gonna say, um, I would reopen the public hearing specifically for that one item.
Correct.
Okay.
Give everybody one shot and then it's over with.
So, maintain a motion on that, can we?
I, I make a motion that we reopen the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and is there any, from the public, is there any question concerning that one specific item?
Chair, again, is there any way, just take the whole fourteen, you guys are convincing about ninety-seven and one hundred and seventeen, and I know that's a lot, but just take the fourteen off the backside and leave the rest of it. Is that a, is that a option?
Definitely.
Okay, so you come down fourteen, so you had a hundred and three slots versus ninety-seven. So, we got, I don't know. That's just an idea.
What?
Yeah, that's, that's not what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, I'd say, uh, you know, sure, do the waiver, but I think we should need four trees, just not just the one tree there on there. So, and... So, we've got, we've got a big expanse with no trees there. I don't see why, two trees on the backside and two trees on the front side. I think that would be a much fairer...
But it's not, we're not really talking about, we have to know that it just to, the guidance, just for the waiver, not as a tree, but as a...
Oh, well, we were talking about...
We're talking about shortening up the parking space.
For more trees.
No.
No, but it's not a tree.
Reconsidering the parking reduction.
Right.
We're just, yeah, thank you. Reconsidering the parking part.
It's a waiver request.
The square footage of landscaping remains the same.
Note, the one question, how many parking spaces, if we do this, are we going to eliminate?
We're eliminating...
We would make sure we had ninety-four spaces in total.
We'll put that in the motion.
That's twenty. Go ahead.
No, did you have something else?
I'm just thinking out.
That's twenty percent. It's ninety-three had changed, but we've wound up at ninety-four.
First, we need a motion to, whether or not to reconsider the parking reduction.
Right.
Yes, do you, have you opened the public hearing? To reconsider a waiver request for reduction of parking spaces to ninety-four spaces. That's what you're doing here, reconsidering the waiver request.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I saw the...
You had that.
Yeah, close your public right first.
It, it's up, it's open already.
Okay.
So, the motion is to grant the waiver?
No, the, the motion is to reopen the public hearing to reconsider a waiver request for reduction of parking spaces to ninety-four spaces.
Right, and now we have to close the public.
Okay, excuse me, one more.
I, I support the motion, and I hope, I hope that that will lead to the board considering other things, but I support the motion so the board can look at other options afterwards.
So, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Wait a minute, you have somebody waving his hand.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, it works clear. Um, I guess the only point I'd make for the board to consider is, is there a full reduction of twenty percent, or maybe it's a fifteen percent reduction, right? You know, find out the number that you're comfortable with, because for some reason, you know, ninety-four spaces, I think it is, whatever it is, just seems a little bit light for that many units with two people, you know, potentially living in each of those units. Some of them are two bedrooms, so there might even be more people living there. Everybody, you know, seems to have a car these days. You're gonna need a car there. It just seems like it's light. I know we said, oh, we can always build more, but try to get it, I think, try to get it a little brighter. I think twenty percent's pretty steep. I, maybe fifteen percent we talked to, and I think that'll benefit a lot of people, including the people living there. That's my gut feel.
Our waiver request is for twenty, so that'll still be our request.
Now, I'll close the public hearing.
And I move that we grant the waiver.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All go in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
And where are we off to now?
Mr. Chairman, we would ask that the board accept the compliant, the, approve the compliance portion of the site. We would modify the parking layout to reduce down to ninety-four. We would, we would expand the green space along the back of the site. We would maintain all of the landscape islands as depicted. And the, we would add one tree along the, is it the south side of the site here? And we would upgrade the species of the red bud instead of the crab apple or the pear. And with those changes, we believe the plan to be complete and in compliance, and we would hope that the board would feel comfortable with staff handling that administratively.
My feeling is that we would accept that you've, you know, met your compliance with the condition that you submit the changes noted to, to Mike or Sarah, and that we've done administratively from there. As far as I can see, you know, you've met everything, all the other conditions.
Then I'll make that a, a motion.
Okay. Do you have the... Second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all.
I'm sorry, Richard, did you say no?
No, I said yes.
Oh, okay. You turned away.
Okay. Something there.
I don't burn wood, I don't burn wood.
Next item is the site plan modification determination in one twenty-six Menonoc Highway.
Um, I believe a representative from the solar company is on Zoom. Is that correct, Elias? Do we have someone on Zoom for this?
Yeah.
All we're looking for here is a determination of whether or not a site plan modification is going to be required for them to add rooftop solar to the Easy Crete building.
Representative from, from where? What's the name of the...
Easy Crete.
Easy Crete?
A representative from the solar company, I think it's...
Megan Yulyn, Rose Revision Energy.
Revision, Revision Energy. Maybe if she could speak more slowly?
Yeah.
No, maybe if you speak a little bit slower, 'cause they have trouble understanding. Are you ready for me to give an overview of the project?
Are you ready for her to give an overview of the project?
Are you ready for an overview of the project?
How are we gonna see it? This is it, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Just some solar panels mounted on a roof, on a metal scene, standard scene roof.
Because this is not actually a site plan modification hearing. This is determining whether that will be required. That's, that's all this is.
We just have this for another company, the last meeting?
Nope, I brought it up the last meeting to determine, you guys to determine...
I thought it was for waste management.
I mixed up the buildings.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, never mind.
They're in the same tower, wouldn't they?
They're across the street from each other.
Right on the same road, right?
Yeah.
Wow, it seems like it's pretty straightforward to me.
Maybe.
Yeah, it's not gonna impede on any... Suppose the area would have, it must have been the bridge, the access to the roof, and it's not expected to have any impact on the...
Very likely.
I don't think that, that would be a required site, you know, modification. I don't know how the rest of the board members feel.
I'm trying to think why it would be. What would be, you know, a future roof that, I mean, if, we're not really establishing precedent here, but it's...
What's the difference going in, putting windows in your, changing your windows or something?
Isn't increasing the height of the building?
Not, not really.
Or the runoff?
Well, it definitely isn't over forty-five feet.
No, not signing, Michael.
I don't think it requires modification. That's my opinion.
It's my opinion as well.
Are we missing something, Sarah?
No, we're not. That's why I thought you guys could maybe determine it at the last meeting, but at the last meeting it...
Well, I think what it was, we don't have anything in our regulations, right?
We don't have anything in the site plan, right?
So, that's why my question is, is, is this...
I've always viewed, from my perspective, is an appliance, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, roof matted AC or something.
It's like putting an air conditioner up.
Generator and air conditioner, any of those sorts of things.
Yeah.
I, you know, I, the only thing, the only thing I would say about it, and I know it's not a problem, but just in, 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 for the purposes of due diligence, because it is a baseball throw, is just to double check with the airport and make sure they're happy with it. Other than that, I don't see the issue.
I would think the, well, I'm concerned if they go after...
Right, right, that's it. As long as somebody get, you get an email from them saying, hey, it's cool, I, I don't see...
Yeah, you can show them a question email, so.
Well, and that's something that could be handled with building permitting process.
Yeah.
Oh, for sure.
I believe most of them now are, are flat black, so there really isn't much...
Well, and there's literally thousands of them, almost on airport property right now, on both, on both east and west sides, so.
Yeah, airports, capital farms.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. So, but again, it's just a deference to our neighbors, because we're good that way.
We give our neighbors deference. That's what I was saying.
Yeah. So, then we, do we need a motion then that this does not mean...
Yeah.
Consensus.
Consensus.
Okay. Consensus that they do or do not?
Do not.
Do not.
Okay.
Did you wanna say something?
I just mentioned that we do complete an FAA review for all of our projects, so we'd be happy to provide the results of that with the permit.
Yeah, Senator Sarah, she's...
Yeah.
Okay, so consensus is that they do not?
They do not.
Need a site plan review?
No.
Right.
Determination?
I'll say, no, do not.
I think it's consensus.
Okay.
Yep.
So, accepted, that's it?
Enjoy the solar panels.
Yes.
Semi say extra power.
Okay, so they're all set.
You're good to go, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much for the time and for the technicalities.
Expect them on me by tomorrow.
Is there anything else that needs to be discussed?
Yes, I need to get a book report, okay? This book is so much fun. It's called Paved Paradise by Henry Grabar, G-R-A-B-A-R, and it's, it's a beach read, okay? You'll, it is, it is really entertaining, really informative, and I learn a lot. I just recommend it. It really had a, okay?
Thank you.
Who's it by? What's the author's name?
Henry, G-R-A-B-A-R.
Grabar.
Grabar?
G-A-R, whoops.
B-A-R.
I see the people, what the EV station is, we draw, we draw everything.
G-R-A.
Yeah, I'm gonna have a whole...
Oh, G-R-A.
...word recommended.
Together since the, um, for next meeting, with the whole list, and it's on, it's in the memo I made for this work.
What's on agenda next?
Uh, next meeting, we have, um, sixty-seven California Street has a multi-tenant application, and they were going to combine that with their public hearing for the site plan review when they add their... Uh, next meeting, we have, um, sixty-seven California Street has a multi-tenant application, and they were going to combine that with their public hearing for the site plan review when they add their additional building. Um, but they're coming in for a site plan determination on their new tenant that's going into the existing facility, um, so that's.
That's usually not too difficult.
Yeah, that shouldn't be difficult at all. Uh, we don't have any public hearings for the next meeting, so it's, it's gonna be majority zoning amendments, um, that's the number he'll get, I've got.
We'll have a party after this.
I've got, uh, a list of ones, um, that I've been working on and put together, and Julius has been working on the solar one, I don't know if he'll have it complete to be presented next meeting or not, and we've had, um, some citizens in North Swansea pulling together an idea for a, a new zoning district, Village Business Three. And so that will all be in your, your packet for next week, all of the details, um, so you'll have a week to kind of sit with all of it, so we can have a good discussion about it on the twenty-seventh. And I should probably inform you guys, the twenty-seventh will be my last meeting with you, because I will be leaving the town of Swansea on August fourth. So I'm trying to make it so that we can have a really good, solid zoning ordinance discussion on the twenty-seventh, so that you're in good shape moving forward for actual zoning amendment season.
It's critical to remember that if you don't have that good discussion, you will be stuck with me.
That's not terrible.
I hope that that incentivizes everyone, presumably.
Yeah, Mike, you're so scary, you are.
No, that's the exact opposite, really.
But I'm hoping we can get a good foundation laid for whoever follows in my footsteps in helping you get through zoning amendment season.
No, where are you going?
Follow in your footsteps.
It'll be just fine, an undisclosed location.
Oh.
Well, I wasn't gonna stalk you.
He might.
You go to work for the C D A keen, aren't you?
An undisclosed location.
Any other business that we need to rediscover or bring up?
Lock the doors.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Stumbled.
Seconded?
Second. It's usually your job, Jane.
All in favor?
I'm not.
Aye.
Aye. Were you?
Aye.